Please call the roll.
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford? Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Would all those that are able, please rise and join me for the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a time for our citizens' forum, a time of the meeting where any citizens that would like to bring an issue in front of the commission are encouraged to do so. It must be something that's not on the regular part of today's agenda. So if you have anything to bring forward, please do, and state your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll move on to awards and proclamation.
Item 4.1, "The Day of October 10, 2012, as Putting the Brakes on Fatalities Day in the City of Salina." David Greiser, Public Affairs Officer with the Kansas Department of Transportation, will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. All year long, we encourage all drivers to be mindful of avoiding distractions and doing their very best as they drive our highways. But once a year, October 10, we celebrate the Put the Brakes on Fatalities Day. The proclamation reads as follows. To the people of Kansas, greetings. Whereas traffic crashes cause thousands of fatalities each year nationwide and are the leading cause of death for people ages 3 through 34, and whereas traffic crashes in Kansas last year killed 386 people, and whereas about two-thirds of all people killed in vehicle crashes in Kansas in 2011 were totally unrestrained, and whereas alcohol-related crashes account for about one-third of all traffic fatalities in 2011, and whereas deaths and injuries on U.S. highways cost society more than $150 billion annually, and whereas safe driving behaviors such as the use of seat belts, not drinking and driving, and obeying traffic laws would dramatically reduce the number of traffic-related injuries and deaths, and whereas the use of cost-effective roadway safety improvements such as all-weather signing and markings, traffic signals, skid-resistant pavement, and removal of roadside hazards could also reduce the number of traffic crashes, and whereas the continued development of safer vehicles and protective traffic safety equipment such as helmets will enhance people's ability to protect themselves and their families from preventable and tragic permanent injuries and deaths. Now therefore, I, Norman M. Jennings, do hereby proclaim October 10, 2012, as Put the Brakes on Fatalities Day in Salina, Kansas, and call upon everyone to help save lives by spreading these important messages throughout our community.
Thank you. Do you have any events or things that you would like to make people aware of?
Yes, actually, every year, we hold -- I'm not sure who it was who first came up with the idea, but I think it's genius. Rather than always hammering away with the same message to adult drivers, we, once a year, hold a poster contest for children. And if we can encourage the children to sit in the backseat and not let mommy and daddy start the car without putting on their seat belt, we've more than accomplished our task. So, to that end, each year, we hold a poster contest, and here in north-central Kansas, in the five-to-seven-year-old category, Katie Trudy of Washington, Kansas, is our winner. In the eight-to-10-year-old class, it's Leah Feldman of Gypsum. And in the 11-to-13-year-old category, we have Ellie Wiles, also of Gypsum. They will receive a new bicycle and a bicycle helmet.
Excellent. Well, I have a signed copy of the proclamation, if you'd like to come forward.
Sure.
Item 4.2, "The Month of October, 2012, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Salina." Cameron Thurner, Outreach Specialist with D-VAC, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. October 1 is today, the very beginning of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so we are going to take the entire month as an opportunity to bring awareness to the victims that have died in the hands of domestic violence and the survivors that are living through it. We have several projects, presentations, and events, but our primary this year is going to be the Clothesline Display, and I'm here with our Executive Director Andrea Quill and the Executive Assistant Jerika and Erin, who's the victim's advocate. And they're all holding T-shirts. We're going to be -- we're part of also the Task Force, the Saline County Task Force, and everyone in the Task Force is going to be providing Clothesline Display projects where victims and/or their families have created -- to memorialize the people that have passed away and the people that are living with the struggle of survival of domestic violence. And the impact is great, a little more than a poster. It kind of brings to heart the voices without a face, allowing people that maybe don't want to share who they are, but still be able to share what they feel. And so, we're quite excited about this, and we welcome anyone who would like to participate. We have additional T-shirts in our office. If you call ahead, if you'd like to make one of your own or know somebody that might want to, and then we also are working on some paper displays where we have copies of paper T-shirts and several classes, and community members are doing that also. So I would like to take this opportunity to read the proclamation.
Please do, you bet.
Whereas domestic violence is a major public concern for our state and nation and is now the single largest cause of injury to women, and whereas domestic violence affects people of all ages, racial, socioeconomic, educational, religious, and occupational segments of our society, especially children, and whereas children from violent homes are physically abused or seriously neglected at a rate significantly higher than the nation's average and have greater risks of alcohol and drug abuse, juvenile delinquency, cognitive and developmental problems, as well as fear, anxiety, and guilt, and whereas domestic violence is not a private family matter but a crime, the consequences of which reach devastating effects on the communities, schools, and workplaces of our nation, and whereas domestic violence represents a pattern of assault and coercive behavior that will escalate in frequency and severity if intervention does not occur, and whereas public awareness and education about domestic violence are needed, as well as uniform efforts on the part of government, health professionals, law enforcement, religious organizations, educators, community associations, and community associations to address domestic violence through prevention, intervention, and treatment for victims and perpetrators. I ask today that you please, the City of Commission of Salina, please proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the month of October.
Excellent. Do you have anything else to bring before the commission?
I think that that's about it.
Okay. Sounds like a lot of neat things happening, and we are definitely happy to proclaim this as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I have a signed copy of the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Item 4.3, "The Month of October, 2012, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Salina." Sherri Sammons will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's my honor to read this mayor's proclamation to you today. Whereas with approximately 1,990 new cases of breast cancer expected to occur among women in this state of Kansas in 2012, and approximately 370 anticipated to die from the disease, breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women other than skin cancers. Whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including an increase in five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer from 74% to 99%. Whereas the nearly 3 million breast cancer survivors living in the U.S. today are a testament to courage, as well as to the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Whereas with the increased use of mammography and programs such as Early Detection Works, a Kansas program which provides screening, diagnosis, and treatment, more Kansas women are being diagnosed at an earlier rate and living longer. Whereas the efforts of various national, state, and local organizations, including Susan G. Komen for the Cure, American Cancer Society, The Race Against Breast Cancer, and the It's About Me program, have made a major contribution to spreading breast cancer awareness to both women and men in all communities in Kansas through outreach, education, screening programs, and have empowered women with the life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms. Whereas through the month of October, women are encouraged to make a renewed commitment to following recommended screening guidelines and to make a mammogram appointment. Whereas the City of Salina recognizes the importance of working together and urges public officials and citizens of this state to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs that encourage annual mammograms and otherwise promote awareness of this disease, now therefore, I, Norman Jennings, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Kansas.
Excellent. What type of activities would you like to bring to our attention?
Ah, there is just a plethora.
That is excellent. Share a few, if you want.
I would love to. First and foremost, if you don't hear about your organization's event, please visit www.salina-goes-pink.com. Everything can be found there, and it is listed in detail. Some of the things that are going on month-long are the firefighters here in Salina, Local Association 782, are selling T-shirt shirts and sweatshirts available at AdEstra. I'm heading there after work tonight. The Inferno is having a Think Pink, Drink Pink, say it fast three times, $2 for every pink drink sold this month. And the 111 Lounge is having Happy Hour on Mondays and Wednesdays, 50 cents of each drink will go toward breast cancer awareness. Now, a really unique one is the Salina Roller Derbies did paintings, and it's called Breast Impressions. I encourage you to check it out to get a visual of what you're thinking right now. I don't know. I'm going to check it out. Daily events or date-specific events are Dillard's Measure and Fit, my very favorite Race for the Cure, where women and men in stilettos do a 100-yard dash, and it is a hoot. It is just hilarious. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah.
There'll be --
The rumors are already flying. Yeah, it's the last thing I need, stilettos. Yeah.
Challenge, a gauntlet has been thrown down.
Oh, there you go. I'm all over. You just tell us where. You just tell us where.
Thursday, isn't it? 100 block of Santa Fe this Thursday night at 7:00.
You wake me up. What time is it? It's like 10?
We have live --
It's at night? You still wake me up.
Live music with Courtney Ervin, Expression Salon, and Hair Loft are both going to be doing pink things down there. Salina sirens are kicking it off. Nikki the Pink Fire. It's just going to be a lot of fun. You get to hear me again if you come. I'll talk about my personal experience. The Inferno's having a Happy Hour after the Heal-a-thon. We have Lee National Denim Day, where I imagine that you and the county commissioners have allowed employees to pay $5 to get to wear a pair of jeans to work, and a lot of us find that really a fun thing to do. Kansas Wesleyan's kicked in with events with soccer, football. Tammy Walker's doing a big spa evening at the hospital on October 25, and Long Mac Ford is doing a bling on October 30. I really encourage you all to, if you're a woman and if you're a man, to do self-exams and to encourage those that you love to do the same. You can save a life and make a difference. So I thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you for being here today. I have a signed copy of the proclamation, if you'd like to come forward.
Can you remind Erin what time that Heal-a-thon is?
Seven.
Seven. What, Thursday?
This Thursday. Come on.
I'll have to check my schedule. I'll beat you.
He won't beat me.
I will beat you.
It's a challenge now.
Really?
I run like the wind blows.
Today, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that moves us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, "Approve the Minutes of September 24, 2012." Item 6.2, "Resolution Number 126937, Appointing Members to the Accessibility Advisory Board, Convention and Tourism Committee, Disciplinary Advisory Board, and the Human Relations Commission." Item 6.3, "Consider Recommendations for Grant Fund Allocation to Local Agencies for 2012 for the Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant." Item 6.4, "Authorized the City Manager to Sign a Change Order with Johnson Controls Incorporated for Deliverables for the Downtown Lighting Investment Grade Audit." Item 6.5, "Reject Bids for Two Snowpiles and Authorize Staff to Rebid."
Are there any items that a commissioner has a question on or would like pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda is read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 4-0. Today, we have no development business, so that moves us into administration.
Item 8.1, "Authorized Revisions to the Reduced Speed School Zone around Oakdale Elementary."
Mr. Stack?
Mayor and Commissioners, this school was expanded in the early 2000s and purchased a property to the, basically to the east of where it is now, and made a bigger playground and made some improvements to that area. And at the time, it doesn't look like the school zone was, I don't know if it was discussed in the past to move it, but the expansion kind of warrants a bigger footprint, and the school zone would feel like should be moved a little bit further east to around Kansas. And then with the pedestrian, the kids in the neighborhood, it seems like Kansas is kind of now the eastern boundary of the school and the school property. So, to be consistent, we feel like Ash and Johnstown as well would need to have the school district just extended, the, what do I call it, the school zone extended to the east a little bit further as well. It was a request by the school district, and I feel like definitely on iron, it's very noticeable, maybe not so much on the others, but like it's a fair request and something that wouldn't be a major issue to accommodate for any of the ones who want to walk to school. So I'd entertain questions.
Mr. Stack, are there other schools around Salina that have more than just the perimeter block designated as school speed zones?
There are, but I don't know how consistent they are.
Okay.
It's a fair, it's a good question. We've expanded one on, since I've been here, on South Street for Cottonwood, and that seemed like a warranted request at the time, but it was further away from the school and a little bigger boundary, so it, I'm not sure how consistent we're on those. If that's something we'd like, if you'd like us to look further into that, it'd be probably worth, if we could do it.
Yeah. No, that's okay. It was just more of a point of curiosity.
Yeah, with all of the school, I mean, the school consolidation, as well as the expansions over the years, I think Ken and Amy Lang have brought most of those to our attention. We've been working on parking and lots of school issues with the School Safety and Traffic Safety Committee. This is just one that was surprisingly hadn't been dealt with yet, so. Any other questions?
Any questions to staff?
Is this a cost the school district pays for?
It is not, and that is something to definitely bring up. We've basically exhausted our 2012 sign budget for it. We'd have a little bit, but we've got a few months left of the year, and so it wasn't something we felt like we could really do this year. And the school district was fine with just wait until 2013 to put those signs up. So, we, the city was planning on doing this as far as our signage budget, our normal operations, but if you feel like the school district should pay for that, we could sure ask them and entertain that option.
Has it ever been discussed with the school board?
Not really, no. We, the city does all the signings, so it seems like we've kind of just changed them as we've needed to. So I don't know if that's come up before or not, Jason, I'm not sure.
I don't know whether it has, but I can't say for sure.
Yeah, they're, it's typically moving signs is not as big a deal, but since these have power to light them, they just, we have to do a new Westar hookup, and it takes a little while, as well as some infrastructure has to be put in place. And the new, the Westar hookups in themselves are so many hundred bucks per hookup, and we need three of them. So right there, we're looking at over $1,000, so we just, it got to be more expensive than just going out and moving a few signs. So I figure next year, we can budget for it a little easier than now.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this item? Bring it back to the commission for discussion and further action.
Guess my thought is approving it, but maybe we need to have that discussion just so it comes up in the future. We've already talked about it and know what the school district's position is on reimbursing us, or at least sharing the cost of this with us is. Definitely.
Would you, would you propose that we defer this action until that discussion could be had?
No.
Or continue with this action and hold that in the future?
Future.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the commission authorize staff to extend the current reduced-speed school zone around Oakdale Elementary as described herein and construct those improvements next year with the 2013 Traffic Control Operational Budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Item 8.2, "First Reading Ordinance Number 1210,660, Amending Sections 8-174, 8-185, and 8-185.1 of Chapter 8, Article 3 of the Salina Code pertaining to qualifications for a building contractor and skilled trade license."
Mr. DeBoerse.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Back on February 13 of this year, the City Commission amended the Section 185 from a recommendation from the Building Advisory Board to allow technical colleges and trade schools to employ a master tradesman, and in the same time, that master tradesman could maintain his individual license so that he could pull a contractor's license for the college, and then at the same time, he could maintain his business. That prompted the discussion in staff about the possibility of a person who is a master tradesman for another company to become a master tradesman away from his company business. That would allow the term "moonlighting" to occur. Currently, it's prohibited by city code, municipal code, to be the designated qualified individual or master tradesman. And I'd like to make a clarification here. The qualified individual is the tested qualified individual for an A, B, a C, or a D contractor. A master tradesperson is a master plumber, master electrician. They pretty much hold equal weight on the scale, if you will, but each contractor is required to have, if they are a building contractor, they're required to have a qualified individual. If they are an electrical, plumbing, or mechanical contractor, they're required to have a master tradesman. So just want to make sure that you understand that differentiation there. Like I stated, it's prohibited at the current time to be the master tradesperson or qualified individual for more than one company. And this prohibits an individual from being the master tradesperson for a company and then having his own business on the side. We were directed by the commission to go back to the Building Advisory Board, and in two meetings, we discussed this with the Building Advisory Board. They, they came back with the recommendation that we maintain it the same as it was, that no changes be made to that. And that was at the June 25 City Commission meeting. And then based on the direction of the City Commission, staff has drafted the necessary amendments to the city code to, in this proposed ordinance. And we have a red line copy of that, it's in your packet, and to assist in identifying those changes that are proposed. There's a couple different areas that we took out the language that said not be the master for more than one company. Also, there was some terminology in there about full-time employment, which we removed because you can't be the full-time for more than one company. I mean, anyway. So, we have identified the following options for City Commission's consideration. Number one, pass ordinance number 12-10660, amending section 8-174, 8-185, 8-185.1. And by the way, 8, 174 would be the qualified individual contractors, and the 8-185 section is the section for master tradespersons. That's why the difference there. Option number two, pass ordinance number 1210660 with modifications as directed by City Commission. And number three, deny the ordinance based on the Building Advisory Board's recommendation allowing the current code requirements to remain in place. And staff recommends option number one. Available for any questions?
Any questions to staff? Thank you. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this? Please come forward and state your name and address, sir.
Eric Campbell, 800 East Doc Holiday Pass, Sun Plumbing Company. I guess, a little confused as to what we're recommending or what we're not. I guess I understood keeping things the same, the way they are right now was the recommendation of the original board. I think that's kind of what I understood there. I don't know how, how they stand on that, but the idea behind, the way that was set in place, the idea of having a master tradesman in a company is to make sure that, that your apprentices and your journeymen, less experienced trademen, are mentored, or that have somebody to go to when there, when there is a situation that they may not be familiar enough to handle. By allowing a tradesman to serve multiple areas is absolutely ridiculous. That's like saying, yeah, let's have a surgeon general or a doctor, whatever, but he's not going to be here. There's no, I mean, you're knocking the legs out from underneath the whole idea behind the originally set a master running the shop. My belief, or by the way, training is, one master should be in each shop, at least one master, and he should be that master for that shop and not aligns with another shop, or that allows somebody to use somebody else's master, but yet not have him, maybe pay him a lesser payroll to be over here working, but to be on your paper over here, but not actually seeing those jobs, making sure that water heaters are installed properly, making sure that, you know, things are going through the proper procedures that need to happen to have a safe plumbing or electrical or, you know, system, not just having some inexperienced guy with two years' experience running electrical in your house and nobody's really overseeing it, kind of letting things go awry. If it misses an inspection, doesn't catch an inspection, or doesn't, you know, things don't go proper, then you don't have that, you know, you got some safeguards in there, and this is one of the safeguards. You're taking this away. Another safeguard you got is your inspection department. You're going to take that away. It just doesn't seem like it's in the best interest of the public health to, to remove that, to change that.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Don Mars, twenty thirty-five East Iron. I am the architect, as well as the chairman of the building advisory board. There's two separate issues here. One, which was just presented to you by the, the master and apprentice and journeyman approach to the fact that the master plumber, master electrician is supposed to be in charge of seeing that the work is accomplished. When you talk about the general contractor side of, of this piece, you look at the general contractors that are licensed and we, it seems like when you pass a new ordinance or you pass something, you always find out after the fact how it's being implemented and how it's being applied for. Today, it's possible in Salina for a person who has met the qualifications to be a qualified individual or to be, get a license in Salina as a general contractor, to do that over the phone via mail and never show up in Salina. Never be on the job in Salina. They can get the license, they can submit the insurance requirements. So they've met all the qualifications. But what I see as missing in our ordinance is the responsibilities that they're supposed to do after they've been listed as the licensed contractor on a project. There's nothing in our ordinance today that defines responsibilities for the general contractor side of it. When you look at the, the plumbers, electricians, mechanical contractors, they follow under state regulations and their state laws and requirements for them as far as things that, that they have to do. And I truly believe that the journeyman, or the licensed tradesman, they have to be involved with the work. They have to be able to be on-site to see what's going on, on those projects. Same responsibilities should be applied to the general contractor. You should have to, you should have to know the project that you're dealing with. You should have to at least be present there, be involved in the whole process. Most of the contractors are, but we have a, the way this has been put together, it allows the other to happen, and it is happening. The whole licensing of contractors, the whole licensing of mechanical, electrical, plumbing contractors was not done to limit who can work. It was done to elevate the quality of the work, to make the work comply with the codes, to make the work safer for the public involved. This is not about a limitation of who can work and who can't. As was stated by Mr. DeVores, this went before the building advisory board two different times, and both times, we concluded that it should stay the same as it is, the way it's currently, meaning that you can only be a qualified individual for one license. If we can establish a way of dealing with the responsibility of the licensees, I'm not so concerned about whether they could represent more than one entity, as long as they can fulfill the responsibilities that are necessary that would follow along with the license. So lacking a list of responsibilities, I'm not in favor of changing the, the way the ordinance is written today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens that would like to address the commission on this matter? Mr. DeVores, you might go ahead and come on back up, because I, at least I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll go from there. First of all, in the staff report, it mentions a detailed summary and kind of synopsis of the building advisory board's recommendations. And I did not get that. So I, attached to this was not the deliberations of that board that kind of bring forward those comments. So if there's some pertinent ones in there, I wouldn't want the commission's action to be reflected of, of that being present. So I would either like to summarize or hold. I think on the surface, when I'm listening to those here today and recalling the issue from before, I heard on the one hand, there are small contractors that don't do enough business to keep a master or the qualified individual on their staff, and to share would be efficiency and would help them. And I've heard from some that they don't want their folks moonlighting. And so it seemed like we were in the area of whether they wanted to keep their employees around or not, if they're working for other people, which in my opinion, isn't a decision of the commission. Hearing what Mr. Mars brought up causes me to say, is, is the entire issue that we don't have qualified people that represent the contractors on these job sites that say this work was done right and only the city does, because there would seem like a grievous error on the part of an architect, general contractor, electrician to perform work and, and not oversee their work, which is what I heard.
You could put engineers in there, too.
Yeah, engineers, too, which is what I think I just heard.
If I might speak on that.
Yes.
I think Mr. Mars's concern is that the ordinance does not say that the qualified individual or the master tradesman needs to be on the job at all times.
Mm-hmm.
I know right now of qualified individuals that are not even in the state of Kansas.
Mm-hmm.
They get the license and they have, they have superintendents who run the jobs for them, and they supervise the superintendents. Now, that's on a qualified individual side of it. Once again, you always got to remember, there's qualified individuals and master tradesmen. Now, master tradesmen, a, a, let's take a, a master plumber or master electrician, they can supervise a certain amount of apprentices and journeyman underneath them. And it's not, it's not as structured on the qualified individual's side as that. So, yes, I, I, I'm, I'm aware that there are qualified individuals that may have never even seen the job.
So for qualified individuals, it may not change what's, this ordinance may not change what's in practice already happening?
The ordinance would allow, and we did, we researched with several, staff contacted several employers, particularly master trades, plumbers and mechanicals, and some of the contractors, and asked if they would allow that to be, allow their master tradesperson or master or qualified individual to go work for another company. And they said absolutely not, overwhelmingly, that was the, the.
Yeah.
And I, I think staff's position is that, that it's not, it's not something that the city should regulate whether or not, I mean, we, we, our goal is to make sure that there is a qualified person who we can go to if we have an issue, if we have a problem on the job, and, and we can go to that qualified individual. And whether or not he has to jump on an airplane and fly to Salina, Kansas, or drive here, you know, that's, that's the whole idea, is we have, we have that qualified individual person, someone who can, we can go to if there's a problem. But at least we know someone in the company. I mean, without putting together a big program to monitor all of this, we, that, that would be pretty encumbersome to do that.
Yeah, I, I was taking both of the, the comments of Mr. Campbell's and Mr. Mars into consideration that, that I, I personally don't want to, or feel that we should try to, through ordinance, describe what somebody's going to do with their employees. That's not what we're here for. But if there's a safety concern, which is what Mr. Campbell raised, that basically somebody can go to a job and do substandard work that's a safety hazard, and nobody will catch it, then of course, that should be a concern. And he's voiced it to the commission. And, but I didn't hear that that was ever a root issue here. I mean, if a, if the individual can be representing two different companies, that still doesn't change whether or not they're ever to the site in the first place, which I suppose if somebody electrically does a job wrong and they have to come along and rip it all out because they didn't have their qualified, well, their, their master there frequently enough, then that company is just going to take a big hit out of their own management practice.
Yes.
So I, that's where I'm having problems with putting together where, where the safety risk and where the lack of, of deliverables are to the end customer.
This would not, this would not eliminate the requirement for permits. It would not eliminate the requirement for insurance. It would not, it would not eliminate any of those requirements. We would still require permits to be issued. We would still, we would still go out and do inspections. We would require all of that. This ordinance does not eliminate any of that. It doesn't just give anybody free rein to go out and do whatever they want. They would still have to come register with the city clerk's office. There, there are, an example, another example is we have, we have a lot of companies who have more than one mass, more than one master plumber or master electrician, but only one is designated as the qualified individual. So everybody else underneath who is a master can go out and do their own work, but they don't because their company does not allow that.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the ordinance does state, as it is now, that if you are the master or the qualified individual, you can only work for one person. So if you're a master electrician and your, your neighbor wants you to do some work for them, you cannot do that.
And there's, there's nothing that, that prohibits a company from saying, if you become a master or qualified individual from a competing company within such a distance of us, then, then you can no longer be employed here. There's, there's nothing that would prohibit that.
Right.
That's a dis, a hiring practice that wouldn't be discriminatory that they could, that they could make. Mr. Schreick?
And, and trying to help out with a couple of points. You mentioned the detailed summary, and that's contained in the June twenty-fifth staff report to the city commission, which was omitted from the original packet distribution, but then was sent out as a supplement.
Okay.
Additionally, then, in that same report, it speaks to this issue of moonlighting and the employer's ability to limit an employee's ability to moonlight. And so, there's a couple scenarios that are pointed out in that staff report. One is just, as you described, that can be an, an arrangement between the employee and the employer on a case-by-case basis, whether it's acceptable for the, the qualified individual or the master tradesman to moonlight. And secondly, another scenario is, some, some employers are listed as contractors with the city of Salina that are corporate employers. And so they have a shift work type scenario where they have an employee designated as their qualified individual, and that employee would like to be able to, on nights and weekends, do contract work as their own qualified individual, building contractor, a master tradesman. And so, there are scenarios whereby if our ordinance didn't prohibit it, it seems likely that the employer would, would be okay with that. And so, part of the intention is to get ourselves out of that, that relationship, allow that to play out between each employer and their, their employees. With respect to the accountability of a qualified individual being on the job site or not, Mr. Mars's description is very accurate in terms of where we started and where we were trying to get. When we first passed contractor licensing, all we had was registration. There, there was, were no qualification standards or accountability. And so the, the primary goal at the time was to increase the quality level. And, and I feel like we've done that. There was some discussion about this qualified individual scenario, and the accountability that we currently have isn't necessarily that they're physically on the job site, but their name is online with the building permit. So, as Elvin described, inspections still take place, and if there are issues, then there's the possibility of contractor discipline through our process with the qualified individual. Now, that, that doesn't get us to a level of accountability that we could have if we specified, you know, how much time they had to be on the job site. So, it, we very easily could take it to the next level and prepare an additional amendment, either postpone action on this and, and add to it qualifications or, or criteria for the qualified individual, or we could come back subsequently and, and clarify that detail as well.
Yeah. And that's, me personally, that really wasn't a, a place that I felt we needed ahead. Is, are there any portions of this that are argued as burdensome to any of the contractors? Are we adding further additional requirements or, or anything?
We're lifting right now.
That's what I thought. I just.
I, I think the burdensome requirement, the feedback we get that's burdensome is the master tradesman or qualified individual that can't pull a second license in the moonlight scenario.
And that relieves that burden.
Right.
Yeah, Commissioner, something to think about. That's, we're only talking within our jurisdictional authority. So if you're a master electrician or a qualified individual, licensed contractor that's a qualified individual, you're within our jurisdiction, you work for a single employer, let's say the city of Salina, you're not allowed to use your license to do any other jobs for anyone else in the city of Salina, even if we wanted you to. Even if we didn't care. We said it's Saturday, you're working for your buddy down the block, he's going to pay you something. Sorry, you can't do that. Now, you could go outside the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Salina into Rosaleen County or anywhere else in the state, presumably wherever you're at, if you're following their licensing requirements, if they have any, you'd need to do that. But from our perspective, you could take as many jobs as you want. And as the building official said, there's no requirement today that you have to be on the job site. There's a, there's a presumption, well, it's more than a presumption. You do have responsibility for the job, in essence, based on our code, but it doesn't describe or depict in any way what that might be, such as simply being familiar with the job, the site, the plans, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't even depict that at all. So, quite honestly, our, our thought, our thinking behind this is that I think it was intended to somehow relate to a safety issue, but we can't get you there. It doesn't do it. All it does is ties the hands of, of the employer, or the person, qualified individual. And we believe that that decision should be left with the employer as to whether they can work for somebody else or work on their own. We can't find any effectiveness to safety, and that's why we want to lift this. I do agree, we had a conversation with Mr. Mars, and I think, I agree that, and I don't believe it'd be a difficult amendment to the ordinance to follow up and, and actually say, this is what we expect as far as general expectations and responsibilities of a qualified individual or a, what the phrasing for the tradesman?
Master tradesman.
I, I don't think that would be a difficult thing. I, I agree, we need to do that because that's what really starts to outline, we expect you to be familiar with the site, with the job, some of those things, so that if there is some, there's a miscue, and eventually we're utilizing the section of the code where, where there's a meeting with me about the license, I've got something to grab because I really don't have anything to grab right now. And I can say, I can ask questions about familiarity with the site and with the plans and so forth and so on. I can't do that today because we don't put that burden on them. We just kind of say, hey, you sign off, you're responsible, but what does that really mean?
Yeah, it seems like two totally different issues to me here. On, on the main issue that is here is simply that the city has no compelling interest in regulating business trade practice of, of these individuals. To tie it to safety makes sense on the surface. When you look at it and say, well, if this guy's doing all this stuff, he's not going to be watching this, he's not going to be watching that, well, that speaks to the quality individual, not a city ordinance. If you've got a person who can't handle these multiple jobs he's doing, that's going to come back and haunt him either in disciplinary actions or lawsuits or future things down the road. I think that this ordinance, or this modification simply says, the city is not going to restrict their ability to trade. It's the way I read this. And is, is it anything beyond that? We're simply removing the burden of not allowing these people to go out. If, if the companies want to fire their master tradesman because they want to work on, that's completely their, their option. And to me, that's, seems to make, that's, that's free enterprise. That's capitalism. That's, you know, if you don't want to, if the guy wants to risk his job by taking a moonlight job, so be it. The city has no interest in that whatsoever from the safety standpoint. I agree with you. I think we come back, if we have a problem with these out-of-state individuals who are acting as the master or whatever else, and we want to put some regulations, which I think we should, I think we should maybe start heading down that road. I think that's a separate issue that needs to be addressed at that time. But for this, this, simply the city backing out away from trying to control business practice, to me, it's, it seems pretty straight ahead.
If it helps at all, as a little bit of additional background, at the time that we were considering the contractor licensing, there was a concern that transitioning from registration to a qualified individual would cause registered contractors to share qualified individuals. And so there was some speculation that that might happen, or concern that we wouldn't get, you know, knowledge of, of particular jobs and job sites. So, there was quite a bit of. So there was quite a bit of discussion about how much time did they have to spend on the job, or do we approach it from a you have to have one per contractor? Now, we've transitioned past that. In fact, the provisional licensing issue is the next thing on your agenda, and we're now well into qualified individuals and and have that pretty well established, that I don't think you run the risk of shared qualified individuals to the point that they're not duly observing jobs and taking responsibility. And frankly, I'm not sure that we anticipated qualified individuals from outside the state being put on building permits.
As long as they're doing their job properly, that's the key. As long as they're doing it properly, does and they're efficient, they can balance two or three jobs, that should be left up to them. If they can't do their job properly, that's when we're supposed to step in.
That could happen to somebody doing one job.
One very small job.
Yeah, that's right.
No comment. I take that. Any other questions, the staff? Eddie? Yes?
Eric Campbell again. The idea behind a master, I'm a master plumber. Okay, so the idea behind a master trade is that a master plumber takes an apprentice, and he trains him in the trade. He teaches him and he oversees him and makes sure that he does that trade properly. He develops into a journeyman. A journeyman has the capability to do a trade at a base level and then becomes a master and then takes on another journeyman and trades them up in the trade. That's the way that this that was set forth back in ancient times. It's always been that way. And to take a master plumber, this is my problem with this whole whole conversation, is to take a master plumber and say that I can go ahead and I can sign on to a drain cleaning company, and now he can install a water heater because he's got my name on his license. He's not a qualified technician. If he was a qualified technician, all he has to do is go to the state, put in his time, go to the state, take the test, and he's a master himself. If you're you're saying that you're trying to prevent somebody, there's nobody preventing anybody from growth, from from becoming more, because the idea is, if you're smart enough and educated enough in the field that you're working, and you take a state board and you pass that test, and now you're a master plumber. There's no there's no shortage of master plumbers. All you have to have, they've reduced it, the state levels reduced it from four years to two years, I believe. Is that correct? Or six years to four years, I think now for a master. When I took it, it was it was higher, and they've reduced it because of the there's not enough youth in in this field. And so it isn't like the guy can't go and take it. But if you go and you say that I can become a master plumber, I can go out and find some guy that's working for somebody and say he's a drain cleaner, hey, I'll put my you give me $10,000 a year, I'll put my name on your license, and you'll be a plumbing company. So now he can go out and put in water heaters, he can go out and do things that he's not capable of doing. Now, you're saying that I'm going to oversee him. I'm going to work for this shop and oversee him and make sure he's taken care of him, make sure his company's taken care of. When you're in-house, they don't use every masters. Companies in this town have multiple masters. They use one on the license. It's typically the owner. Every once in a while, you'll see somebody who's not qualified but has the money, but can't qualified, but he hires somebody to do it, and he does the bookkeeping of it. And he's that guy is his master. That's he takes care of all of his people, aren't he? In that I don't know how you think a guy can run another company, because I can barely keep track of my guys in one house, in one company. That's like saying I'm going to watch all the neighborhood kids and make sure they don't get in trouble. I can keep care of mine, but you know, that's pretty that's a pretty broad umbrella you're you're putting out there. It's protecting the interest of the community to have a master in-house and that master dedicated to that house. If this guy wants to become a master, then he can go and take the test. That's already set forth. Just go take the test. You got the time in, go take the test. If he his job, you know, requires him to be the master there, I kind of get where the all this came from. This came into effect because the college needed somebody to teach out there, and they weren't willing to give up their business to teach out the college. And then everybody decided, well, I'm going to moonlight. Well, moonlighting isn't really moonlighting. If you have insurance, if you're bonded, you're licensed, you're a company. You're not moonlighting. Now, you are a company. Every company should have a master in-house. That master should be dedicated to that house.
Thank you. Do any further questions or any further discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance 12-10660, amending the Salina Code pertaining to qualifications for a building contractor and skilled trade contractor license.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 12-10660, amending sections 8-174-185-185.1 of Salina Code pertaining to qualifications for business building contractors and skilled trade contractor license. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 12, 10,661, amending sections 8, 171, 8, 172, 8, 177, 178, 179, 180, 181, and 182 of Chapter 8, Article 3 of the Salina Code pertaining to provisional contractor licensing requirements.
Commissioners, real quick, I didn't want to interrupt the city clerk when she gets on a roll there, but and I don't need a vote, I just need a nod, but I just want to make sure, would it be all right with staff to work with the building advisory board to address that question of what are those general obligations, responsibilities of a qualified individual and a master? Because I think that does best address the situation and scenarios that were just brought up to you. I think we can allow them to talk through that and see what comes out of that process, if it's okay with you.
Yeah, I think I mean, I think it answers a couple of the issues.
Just wanted to make sure we were staying in line with your thoughts.
Yeah, because the public best interest isn't necessarily, I mean, safety, of course, is first, but their building, the financial side of it with more competition is obviously in their best interest too. So, yeah, let's let's take the other side, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dohwalt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I know this one's got a lot more numbers on it, but I think this one's going to be an easy one. I hope. This particular ordinance is to basically clean up the municipal code. There's a lot of language in there, and that's why there's so many different sections in here about provisional contractors. Provisional contractors were, at the time when we transitioned or when the city transitioned to the contractor licensing, there were a number of contractors out there who were the registered contractors who they didn't didn't want or they weren't required to go take, they'd been working in the city for years and years and years. Sometimes families had been working together, bringing their sons into the business, and so the the city did not feel like those individuals needed to go take the test and and to test to become, which you would have to do today if you want to become a licensed contractor, or I mean, you want to become a qualified individual or a master tradesman, you either have to have passed the test or a licensed architect or engineer can be a qualified individual. So this is basically just a cleanup item, to remove that language from provisional, because we continually get this this went out the door 2010, I think, was the last with that or 2007, 2007 was the last time that you could apply for a provisional license. And then there were more continuing education that was required to get this provisional license, and you had to go through the three years and take continuing education to renew this license. So these are no longer available. So this is just basically a cleanup item. All of those different areas, as you'll see where all of the strikeouts are, these are all have to do with this provisional building contractor license. So we are asking for you to to pass this ordinance. We've identified just two options. Pass the ordinance 12-10661, amending sections 8, 171, 8, 172, 8, 172.1, and then chart 1, 8, 177, 8-178, 8-179, 8-180, 8-181, and 8-182, and chart 3 of Chapter 8, Article 3 of Salina Code pertaining to the provisional contractor licensing requirements. We'd ask that you pass that on first reading. Pass, I guess I'm going ahead of myself, pass ordinance number 12-10666 with 661 with modifications as directed by the city commission. We just ask that or recommend that you recommend option number one, just to clean up the code and get this out of here so that we don't have to explain this continuously to new contractors coming, and they want that provisional license. That'd be available for any questions.
Any questions, the staff?
No.
Thank you. Is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 12-10661, amending sections 8-171, 8-172, 8-172.1, chart 1, 8-177, 8-178, 8-179, 8-180, 8-181, and 8-182, chart 3 of Chapter 8, Article 3 of the Salina Code pertaining to the provisional contractor licensing requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval on first reading of ordinance number 12-10661. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Item 8.4, first reading ordinance number 12, 10,662 of this lining or to allow the licensed specialty concrete contractor to perform concrete work in the right-of-way and to clarify the allowed scope of work under a Class A, B, or C building contractor license.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Third time's charm up there.
This one here is a little trickier, but this this order, this particular concept went to the building advisory board twice. This kind of started because we discovered that the requirement for a right-of-way concrete, a right-of-way concrete contractor, the test that had been assigned to that is mainly a paving con paving test, asphalt mixtures, stuff like that. And I don't know if any anybody's seen the last time we have asphalt curb and gutter and sidewalks, but we don't. They are concrete. So that's kind of how this got started. We took it to the building advisory board, and we at first proposed to just remove that language and just put it right into the right-of-way concrete, I mean, into the concrete contractor's license, the specialty contractor, concrete. So of course, questions got raised. We did, I I went back and researched, and we had three contractors who did not have concrete, let me back up, I'm sorry. We had we had several contractors that had both licenses, both a right-of-way concrete contractor's license and a specialty contract concrete license. They had to maintain both of those because they did structural concrete work, and they also did right-of-way concrete work. So they had to maintain two licenses. So there was that other part where we have several contractors that had to carry two licenses, which is not fair, for lack of a better word. So we we started delving into this, and and that's when we were going to move everything into the concrete. But then we said, wait a minute, wait a minute, we have some provisional, I think one provision, one had been a provisional. So in other words, they did right-of-way concrete work, they didn't do any structural concrete work. We also had either one or two that did take the paving test, so all they've done is flat concrete work. So we didn't want to move them into the structural concrete, now have them out doing structural buildings, structural being able to do structural concrete work. So we decided to leave that right-of-way concrete work in there and to take the language from there and put it into the concrete so that a concrete contractor can do flat curb and gutter and sidewalk. I mean, I and we also also had the the other the other sticking point was whether a Class A, B, or C contractor could do right-of-way concrete work. And this is where we enlisted the aid of the Public Works Department. We met with them, city manager's office, the Public Works Department, Dan Stack, who's also still in the room. We met with him to to see what kind of impact that would have, and and we found out that they have Class A, B, and C contractors that do right-of-way concrete work. And it actually says it in the if you look at the first page, it talks about generally and specialty concrete contractor work. Actually, go down to Class C, which is at the bottom of my page, but generally and specialty concrete work on one and two family residences and their accessory structures only. While the building advisory board, we talked about removing the word "only," and and that way a class, because Public Works and my and and my staff, we are we are satisfied that if if someone can do a Class C contractor can do foundation walls, they certainly should be able to, they're they're qualified to do flat concrete and curb and gutter. And there was quite a few, I can't remember the name, I think, three or four Class C contractors who regularly do city city work for that. So we we took it a step further than the building advisory board, because we felt like even in the in the other classifications, the A and the B contractor, they also say generally, general and specialty concrete work on any buildings not exceeding three stories or structures, not exceeding 65 feet in height. But it sounds like that's where it ends. It so we had, there was a lot of discussion as to, well, does that mean that they can only do that on their project? They can only do the curb and gutter work on their project? And that was not how it was intended. So we went back and we have the proposed code amendments. I'll just go over the Class C one, and and we're hoping that this has the bugs out of it. But we have reworded all three of those to state generally, general and specialty contractor work on one and two family residences and their accessory structures. We remove the word "only" and signs, and specialty concrete work in all specialty classifications except swimming pools, fire alarm, communication systems, or fire sprinkler systems. So we think that that has cleaned it up, and we worked right up till the last minute to get this get this together. And then we also, as you'll see, bolded in the next page on the specialty concrete contractor, we've added the the language, "and construction of sidewalks, driveways, curbs, and gutters located in any city city right-of-way." This and as you'll notice down below, the specialty right-of-way concrete contractor is still remains intact. So it doesn't eliminate those three contractors who do not also carry concrete, specialty concrete contractor licenses. So I hope I didn't totally confuse you, but anyway, that's that's kind of what we decided to do. This this eliminates the requirement to for a lot of contractors to carry dual licenses. So the following options are suggested for commission's consideration. Adopt ordinance number 12, 10, 662 on first reading, amending section 172.1 of the Salina Municipal Code as proposed. Option number two, adopt ordinance number 12, 10, 662 on first reading, amending section 172.1 of the Salina Municipal Code with any modifications as deemed appropriate by the commission without further review by the building advisory board or city staff. Number three, postpone action ordinance number action on number 12, 10, 662 pending further review by the building advisory board with specific direction from the city commission. Number four, take no action, thus declining to approve the proposed text amendments. And staff, of course, recommends option number one.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff?
No.
No, thank you. Went over it pretty good.
Thank you.
If I may, I've got one clarification, mostly for the people following along at home for the benefit of the written staff report. As Elvin read the proposed language, he read it as specialty concrete work when it's actually specialty contractor work.
Oh.
So the premise, the premise is that if you're an A, B, C, or D licensed contractor, you can do that level of building construction and all the specialty contractor work, with the exception of pools, fire alarms, communication systems, and fire sprinklers.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to commission for further discussion and action.
I move we adopt ordinance number 12-10662 on first reading, amending section 172.1 of this line of municipal code as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 12-10662 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Do we have any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? We're adjourned.